Evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, and this is a regular meeting of the zoning board adjustment. Chairman, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board, and this meeting is being recorded by AP TV. Roll call.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Natalie Passerini.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully is absent this evening, and Chairman Christopher Avelloni.
Here. All right, so we have a couple of housekeeping issues. The first, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of 503 8th Avenue, West Spring Woods Settlement.
I'll second.
Who will second, Russell?
Yes.
Okay. Eligible members are Wendy Glassman.
Yeah. It's actually a relatively yes.
That was a yes, okay. Daniel Harris.
Yeah.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Scully is absent this evening, and Chairman Avelloni.
Yes. All right, just a quick look. Has everyone had a chance to look at the calendar of zoning board dates for next year? Everyone have any issues or concerns or questions? All right, Marie, you got it. Send it off to the happy home.
No comments, no one? All good? Okay. Thank you.
All right, onto the applications. First up, we're going to be doing 1118 Summerfield Avenue. Ms. Sager, is that correct?
Yeah. I don't know if I'm supposed to sit or how formal this is.
Please sit.
Relax.
You're good.
So my name is Yana Sager. Hoping to get the permit for 1118 Summerfield Avenue. A little about the purpose of that.
Why don't I raise your right hand?
Oh, it needs to be sworn in.
Salma Swear Affirm, the testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And you are the applicant, correct?
I am.
And you own the property at 1118 Summerfield?
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead.
Jack, before she starts, could you swear?
Swear in our staff. Sorry. You, Salma Swear Affirm, swear affirm the testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jerry Frieda, board engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Ms. Sager.
Hi there, guys. So again, my name is Yana Sager. Here for approval of a permit, hopeful approval of a permit for 1118 Summerfield Avenue. A little about my situation, trying to get this approval for the extension. For the last two years, I've been the caretaker for my 95-year-old mother who lives in central New Hampshire. I am a flight attendant who flies and works and lives out of New York and New Jersey, so as you can probably understand, it's been a minute. Trying to get her to this property, and I just didn't realize, I guess I was naive, how long this process is and what's involved in the process. So now I feel kind of crunched to get my mom here. But basically, the purpose of the extension is to have her on one floor. Her condition, she's aging, is deteriorating, so she's not quite as ambulatory as she used to be. So I do need that one floor where she doesn't have to go up and down stairs. So that is the main purpose. There really is no other purpose. I've been in the community. I was a landlord prior to that when I purchased the property to a Section 8 tenant, who I tried to keep there for the seven or eight years. I bought it that way, she was in it, and I kept her there. I do care about the community and making it a more beautiful place. I see Asbury changing quite a bit, so I'm encouraged by that, and I hope that I can basically help with that. I can try to answer any questions you guys have, but my architects are here too.
Is this currently a one-family?
It is a one-family, yes.
Okay. And will you be living there with your mother as well?
I will be living there, providing full-time care. And my sister's trying to help. She's in London, so she's going to be going back and forth trying to help me out, yeah.
I understand.
If you have any questions for me, my architects are also here.
No, please proceed.
Is that it?
No. Let me just say, so my report has an error in it. If you go to page... Sorry about that. I kind of jumped the gun on this a little bit, but... Page six, where we talk about the variance thresholds. And this is an undersized lot, and it's next to another vacant lot, but that lot is also undersized. So they're not obligated to do the buy-sell offer, because if they try to acquire a piece of that other lot, that would result in a variance also. And because the size of the lot is so big, it's egregious to make them buy so much excess land. You know, it'd be like having... It's almost like an 8,000-square-foot lot if they joined both lots together. So where it says under 5.2 offers to buy-sell, please disregard, that is not applicable to this case. It is strictly a, you know, a C12-type variance in order to permit the building addition that is being sought. And perhaps we should have the architect come up and describe the nature of the building addition and how it relates to the site, and we can kind of roll forward from there.
So the hardship is there.
Well, only under the threshold of... You know, I can't buy more land, but does it have to be where it is?
Since we're talking law, maybe I can jump in here.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that they have a prime facere case that they're certainly entitled to the hardship yet. They still have to prove their hardship. But yeah, it would be ridiculous to make... Do the, you know, offer to buy, offer to sell and all that, because it's not... In order to make this lot more conforming, you'd make the other lot more non-conforming. So it's not making any sense there. But let's do this first, okay? Number one, I've looked at the notices, and we do have jurisdiction to hear this case. Number two, is a next-door neighbor here by any chance? Anyone in the audience that lives next to this property? No? Okay. Saying they were noticed. Okay, that's fine. But they still have to tell you what they want to do. Still have some other issues that have to be addressed in the case, and based on the totality, you'll decide whether a hardship has been proven. But the additional criteria is not necessary in this case. I agree with them.
Through the chair, may I just ask, is there an engineer here tonight?
We are, both of us are architects here. We did bring an engineering group. And we sponsor your engineering comments. We address all of them.
Yes, you're not under oath yet, but that's okay.
We'll get to it.
We'll get to it.
Just want to know who to ask the questions to.
Yeah, you can ask.
Okay, thank you.
I brought a board. I'm not sure if...
First, let's swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Salma Swear Affirm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Who are you, sir?
My name is Dan Nolan. I'm a licensed architect in New York and New Jersey since 2004, and I work at MSA Architects, prepare for drawings.
That's Michael Savarrez's office?
Michael Savarrez.
And how long have you been licensed in New Jersey?
Since 2004.
Okay. And the license is in good standing?
Yes.
Have you appeared before the planning and zoning boards?
Yes.
Thank you. We accept your credentials. What was your last name again?
Nolan.
Nolan?
N-O-L-E-N.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I'm not sure how you want me to...
Do we have an easel for him, Marie, or something?
Someone seems to have absconded with all the easels. Why do people quite...
I can hold it to you.
Let's mark that A1 for identification.
I believe you already received these prints, that the site work drawing you have as a handout. I'm not sure if you want to care about that.
Well, is it identical to that?
No, this is regarding the report about...
All right, let's talk about the board. First, I'll go with that as A2.
So this is the site plan showing existing and proposed side by side. The house is existing two-and-a-half, two-story. You know, there's no attic for it. It's in the reports as two-and-a-half, but there's just two stories. And you can see, this is the narrow lot that we were just talking about. And the biggest concern being the existing setback. I believe that the east side of the property is only 1.6 feet away from the property line, where 6 feet is required. And the entire house is, the existing house is right here. And the existing deck also aligns pretty much with that. This plan shows our proposed addition, where her mother would reside, aligning with the existing setback as well as a new proposed deck. As far as coverage, and... So the addition itself is proposed. The square footage of the addition is 250 square feet, 254 to be exact, this little shaded region there. So put to the floor plans. That sheet is just the notice sheet shown, 200-foot radius. Notice that round. This page shows the existing foundation and our proposed foundation, which will just be a crawl space, no basement. There's an existing cellar, an unfinished cellar that would just basically remain a cellar, not a habitable space. This being the existing floor plan and the existing rear deck. See, there's kitchen, existing living room, and existing covered front porch, which basically will remain, except we're going to shift the kitchen up a little bit to try to accommodate the addition for her mother with an additional full bath and a bedroom and a new deck. Not quite as big as the existing deck, but similar. Just pushed out the back.
How much additional lot coverage is there?
Additional lot coverage is 244 total. So it's like, the additions of the house is 254, but since the deck is slightly narrower overall, the proposed additional lot coverage comes out to 244.
Yes.
If you want to hold on to it the whole time. You can move it around.
So basically, it's terrible changes on the first floor to be doing over the other. And the second floor, proposed master bedroom directly above it. And the front bedrooms are being modified slightly to accommodate, you know, to give a little more room for the proposed master bedroom and bathroom on the second floor. The elevations basically remain the same on the front elevation. We're just replacing windows and siding. Attention to us today, according to a letter about siding, she said she intends to redo the siding if possible, if alleged of a problem. That's her intention to redo it and make it all, you know... And as far as the windows comment in the letter too, the windows are going to be replaced in kind of double-hung windows as well. They might get slightly bigger, not been overshown there, but they were sized slightly bigger for egress purposes. Side elevation obviously will just get lower.
So you're going to match the color and type of siding if you cannot replace all siding? Is that the intent?
Correct.
And roofing material?
Yes.
Do you have any questions? Basically, the order of... Can I ask, would you still consider this a single-family home?
I would just say it's, you know, one family.
Okay. I just, I think that's important for the board to know.
Right.
Yeah.
There's no, there's not two entries.
If it's approved, it'll be noted in the record that it is a single-family residence.
Correct.
Well, there's not going to be two kitchens or two...
Right.
The existing kitchen is being renovated. Like I said, rearranged a little bit to give a little more room to work on the back addition.
Yeah, so as you astutely acknowledged, one kitchen, which is usually our threshold for determining that. But I do have a little concern about the egress for the new bedroom on the ground floor being, you know, kind of a pass-through to the kitchen as an exit for the whole ground floor. And I don't know if there's a way to, you know, maybe do something so that the bedroom is better isolated. This is very easy conversion to a SRO-type, you know, bedroom, easy access to the back, don't have to go through the rest of the house type of rental situation that we've had problems with in the past, because you can just cut it off from the kitchen bathroom, from the kitchen and the rest of the living space on the ground floor. So I don't know how bad it is lately with the zoning office having those types of problems, but that was one of our... One of our little things.
I would say it's a valid concern, but I think I would like to trust Ms. Sager that she wouldn't make it an SRO.
I mean, I'm not sure if there's actually a window back there which would isolate it, not a door. I actually don't even know. Is that open?
Well, we have a door to get to the deck.
If it makes any of the board members feel better, we can do it.
Yeah, so if people want to go out on the deck, they have to go through the bedroom.
Through the bedroom. Right, right, which is unusual.
But, you know, that's a building, more of a building department, zoning department concern. We're just going to flag it as, maybe it should be...
A window.
Well, I think they should have a door out to the deck.
No, they need to...
Maybe just needs to work differently.
Could we put the door somewhere else?
Yeah, I don't know if we can create a hallway or if it has to come out the side or, you know...
As opposed to accessing the deck directly? Is that what you mean, Donna? But then, there isn't that much room on the side of the house, is there?
Well, on the...
It's still a 10-by-12 bedroom.
I'm sorry. North, is that north? On the driveway side, they have more elbow room.
Well, but the driveway is also extending it to the other lot, in my understanding.
Well, that might not be necessarily in the way of doing this. Maybe once we talk more about the site, we'll have a better understanding of that, how that works. But again, I just want to... I just want to note that, yes, having the direct access to the deck through the bedroom raises some...
Is there any way we could put a condition on that, Jack? That it would not be potentially a...
I intend to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, this has to be enforced.
Right.
Yeah, that it's clearly limited to a single-family residence. Yeah, they don't want to get two COs all of a sudden. Sold, and somebody else turns it into a two-family.
Sure.
I get that.
Ms. Sager, that room will be your mother's bedroom?
My mother's bedroom.
So basically, you're just giving your mother easier access to the deck, right?
She cannot go up and down stairs, so everything will be in a space where she can access and stay on that floor. So that's my main concern, is just to keep her enough.
But you want to get her the ability to enjoy the deck without Martin all the way through the house.
Correct.
Nice mom. Nothing wrong with that, okay?
She's 95.
Yeah, I hope to make that long.
How long has the house been in the family?
This one I just purchased about seven years ago. I had a Section 8 tenant there for eight, seven or eight years, and it was hard to ask her to leave. But doing this in New Hampshire, our home is in New Hampshire. Community is just financially devastating, emotionally, mentally exhausting, so I've got to get her here.
And do you live in town?
So I lived in Middletown for many, many years, and then when I left, I had to go to New Hampshire. So this was in the family. It's my parents' money. My dad passed away, and this was purchased eight years ago, seven years ago when he passed away. And it's just rented to that Section 8 tenant for those seven or eight years. But now there's a real need. I fly out of JFK. I need to move my family closer to proximity to my work. I cannot stay...
So when the renovations are done, you will call this your home?
This is my home.
You're going to live there with your mom?
Full-time with my mom and my kids. I mean, they're a little older. My youngest is 19, so 18.
So this was purchased as investment property? You've never lived in this?
It was purchased to take care of my dad, actually, with Alzheimer's. It's his money. The rent we made from our Section 8 was able to offset medical for his care.
So he was living there when he was...
He wasn't. He was in New Hampshire, but the money we made from the rental took care of my father, instead of just going through his... The way medical works.
So essentially, it was an investment property?
Investment, I guess, yes. It was an investment property. Sorry.
With all respect, I understand that you're working on pulling our heartstrings.
No, I'm not.
But we just want to understand the facts, you know? Have you ever lived in this? When you keep saying it's your family property, we just wanted to understand if any of your family has lived in there for any time.
No, there's been a seven-year rental, Section 8, renter there for the seven or eight years. And I mean, if I wanted to convert it, I would have converted it. I know what's going on in Asbury. I don't, didn't care to do that, didn't care to take my tenant out of it. She needed a place, she was a good person, and I kept her there. I was making 12... I was making enough to care for my family.
If this is approved and you're able to move your mother here, will you also be living here?
I have to live here. I fly out of JFK. I'm a flight attendant out of the New York tri-state area. So living in New Hampshire is killing me. I'm going to live there full-time. My mother and I will live there full-time, and my children. Well, 18, 19, and 22, so...
So the house will have three bedrooms, right?
I'm sorry?
House will have four bedrooms, yeah.
With the downstairs, right. It will be my mother's downstairs, and then I'll be upstairs, and then I have three other kids, so it's a toss-up for those up there. Yeah.
Mr. Nolan, can you explain a little bit about the cellar hatch? I see the existing house has stairs to the basement, where it looks like the washer and dryer are currently...
The washer and dryer is going to be moved upstairs.
I see that.
So basically, the cellar is going to be, that's just for access. It would be mostly like a crawl space.
Is it 6 foot, is that what it says? I'm trying to look at the small print.
What's the height?
Oh, in the basement? 6'2", right. So it's not a habitable space.
So you're proposing to put in a hatch in the floor?
Correct. Just for access to get down there.
And then there's a vertical ladder that goes down now? That would be proposed to go down?
So basically, like, you know, it becomes a crawl space.
But you're still going to have mechanical down there?
Um... Just a hot water heater.
And the electrical panel.
What's the heat?
What's the heat?
I'm sorry?
What is the heat?
Is that a code question about a vertical...
Yeah, I mean...
It's not a habitable space, so I think code would look at it as such. But after, if they do get approval and move on, they go for their permits, this is going to come up again with them. If there's an issue, they'll catch it there.
We can rearrange possibly, but I think this is one of the problems.
You might have to, depending on, you know, what your basement, you go for your permit.
Right.
Well, I think the board is also concerned that, you know... So is there, is it central air? Hot air, Harris?
I haven't really thought about it.
What do you have, radiator now?
There's nothing... I don't even know, I haven't been...
What type of heating? You don't know? I don't know what the heating system is.
You don't know, oil, gas, no?
So the cellar...
Do you have window ACs?
I'm sorry?
Window ACs?
There was one. Okay, it's not central, definitely not central.
There is gas to the house.
Yeah.
There's water to the house, gas to the house, electric to the house.
That's electric, yeah.
So the, with the hatch, you're closing off the stairs to the basement? Is that to gain floor area?
Correct, yes.
And you won't want to use that, seeing as the yard is so narrow and irregular? You're willing to give up your basement for storage and whatnot?
It's not even a basement, it's so small.
This is the only area that's actually 6'2".
No, but in your new proposed crawl space, you could have a Bilco door that goes down, and you could put a hot water heater and a furnace and everything. Your lawn chairs, your beach chairs. Yeah. So... And without compromising the interior. It's a space that you're giving up that storage when you find that you're living in a house full-time.
Right.
And 6'2" is not... 6'2" is pretty high for mid...
That's about what mine is.
Yeah. So is mine.
I think it's technically a cellar. We heard that.
Livingable space is considered, what, seven feet?
Yeah. I'm not, but it's just...
Yeah, but you're a utility space. 6'2" is a nice... 6'2" is a nice clearance.
This is, I think, this is not really a zoning issue, but I really think you should look at capturing that space for...
Don't give it up.
Don't give that up.
And if you're considering, you know, as part of your renovations, to try and incorporate central heating, you need an outside HVAC condenser. You're not going to have, you might need a variance to put it outside on that, along that side property line. So, you know, we should consider whether you need some additional relief going forward, if the board should grant it now or not. You know, but I think it's a conversation to be had, is if there's someplace else it can go, or, again, as we're talking about, how do we get to the rear deck and where the stairs come down? And maybe we need to put an HVAC condenser out back here. You know, maybe the steps go the other way, the HVAC, you know, condensers, Bilco doors maybe on that side, things like that. So you have a nice livable space going forward and that you're not jammed and crammed and missed opportunity.
Also consider that if it's not on the table now...
Yeah, you don't want to come back.
And if you were to get approval, so you'd have to start all over again with a new application, new fees and all that. And nobody wants to do that, too. So you might want to consider all the...
And an engineer.
All the details.[1730.95] All the details.
All the details.
And get, and get it all checked out to make sure you can do what you want to do with code, or you might have a better layout from an architect.
Now's the time.
Now's the time, so you're spending a whole lot more time and money.
Yeah, you don't want to have window air conditioners in every window.
We can do wall units. Those require outside HVAC though, right?
Like the mini splits?
The minis.
You need, you need condenser outside.
You still need outside.
Yeah.
It's not a call or something, but yes.
And depending upon where you locate them, you may, you have to have a certain setback for that sort of thing, so.
But if you have the ability to throw a duct in, I mean, you could go with a heat pump and solve a lot of problems, space problems.
Do you want to take, take five or ten minutes to discuss what we're talking about, Ms. Sager? Uh, we can do a quick recess and you can discuss it with your architect and come back with your decision.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to take a ten-minute recess.
Okay.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Call the roll, call meeting back door, call the roll, please.
Um, Wendy Glassman.
Wendy.
Oh.
Here.
Here?
She's here.
Daniel Harris.
Yeah.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Natalie Passerini.
Here.
Joe Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Yeah.
Chairman Avloni.
Here. Ms. Sager, I know you've had some discussions with Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Um, do you have a decision or anything how you would like to proceed?
Well, I think Mr. Nolan's gonna be much more professional in saying what he, what I'm trying to say. But time is of the essence. So for me, the most important thing is to, to, to get it moving if I can, as quickly as possible, get my mom here. So the rest I leave to Mr. Nolan.
You realize though, that if you do come back to that decision and you decide to put your equipment and it's on the exterior and you're violating variances again, you have to start all over again.
All over again, yeah.
And that's just, that's not to scare you, but that's just so you understand.
Just be forewarned, yeah.
Well, we wanted to ask as a condition of the, of the hearing, if we'd be able to put a small condenser in that, in that other side.
Uh, we, we can't make a condition of something that you haven't really made any decisions about yourself.
And we don't see it on the plans.
You would have to have it on the plans and you would have to specifically talk to our engineer about it. So.
We would, yeah, we need to be able to understand the size, its location, the distance to the property line. So we would be able to determine whether a variance is needed. Um, and again, you know.
You're asking for a condition of a condition, so we, we couldn't proceed that way.
Okay. Well, in that case, then she's gonna go with.
Okay.
Okay, so hang on, let me just, so we have the side yard setback, side yard setback. Okay. Okay, I don't think I have any other questions about the building design. If anybody else has questions about building design.
Should also note about the, uh, the setback with the, you can go close to the other property.
Which other property?
Uh, the adjacent, the, the adjacent property here.
One to the east?
Uh, we, 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 we.
Okay.
Um, this, the, all the windows on this wall, we were designing it as such, so this, this whole portion could be fire-rated construction. I mean, not having any windows that were over the, uh, square footage for that, the requirement for fire rating, the residential wall being supposed to. All the egress windows around the opposite side, this isn't existing, I know that, I believe we can form a right goal and make sure it does.
Does anyone else have any questions with regards to the structure itself?
None.
None.
All right. Um, there are some questions with regards to the driveway, I understand, though.
Who's gonna answer those?
Yeah.
Um, I should consider regarding it on the, um, the report about the fence.
Well, my understanding is the, the driveway itself extends into the other, the lot. And apparently it's by two feet. Is that correct, Donna?
So the property survey they gave us shows their driveway extends between one, one point eight?
One point eight.
Two point nine feet.
Two point nine feet. So.
Onto lot one.
That's pretty big, an extension into the other property.
Right.
So that would have to be addressed.
I don't even know about it.
How are we gonna address it?
How, how are you gonna address that?
I have, I'll give me some questions.
Okay.
Have you seen this survey?
That portion is over?
Yes. Are you, are you familiar with this?
I think I've seen it, but it doesn't really mean, the little numbers don't mean.
Wait. Okay, 'cause it, it seems to be prepared, I guess it was prepared on your behalf back in March.
Yep.
Uh, of this year by the Mr. Word, Lord, whatever it is, his signature. His garment. Okay. Yeah, it clearly shows an encroachment. Now, we're not, we're not concerned from the variances for this application regarding this encroachment. But what we are concerned about is we want to make sure that we're not valid, we're not gonna validate that driveway.
Okay.
We can't. And we have no jurisdiction to do that because it's someone else's property. When you put the driveway in, because it says it's a driveway, did you obtain the permission of your contiguous property owner to the west to use their property?
My contractor did everything for me. I hired him to.
I know. And if he, if he didn't know about it and he just goes in and puts a driveway in. But were you aware that your driveway encroaches over?
No.
Okay.
And encroaches?
You would have to get an easement from your.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Let's use my copy. Let's have this mark as, what's we up to, eight, two? And I assume, and you have validated that this is your survey, correct? That you have it.
I have.
All right, all right, let's, let's.
And your contractor put in the driveway.
Uh, he, he does concrete and.
But it was subsequent to the purchase of the property.
That was after purchase.
But the driveway is.
Why don't we have it marked?
It's gravel.
It's not, it's not a concrete driveway.
Right, right, yeah, so.
Oh, God.
So it can be, it can break the stone over and it's, it's okay.
Right.
I'll break the stone.
Yeah.
Is that your metal fence as well?
That was there.
So the driveway.
Well, no, no. The driveway is new.
Yes. The fence was there.
The fence was.
But the driveway is what goes over, not the fence.
Was where. Exactly where it is.
Why don't you look at the survey?
It has not been moved.
So the fence was existing and you just put the driveway.
It's iron and it's heavy. I didn't.
Right. So you just, you just put the driveway all the way up to the fence, assuming that that was your property?
I guess that's what it is, yes.
The survey describes that fence as being a wood fence.
Um, on the right.
Part of it is wood fence.
It's.
Part of it is metal fence.
Iron.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you look at a picture tells a thousand words. Why don't you take a look at the survey?
Concrete it in.
Take a look at the survey.
I don't know.
Okay, I got that.
That's my picture.
Yeah, I, yeah, but why don't we have your client have the survey in front of her so she knows what I'm talking about.
You're talking about this fence here?
Yeah.
And that's your property line, the, the heavy dash line?
Uh-huh.
So they built the new driveway just up to this existing fence? So then we would have to remove just this, this bit of?
I don't think that, I don't think they did do that. They just put gravel down. Fence is there, but they didn't, they didn't do a good job in other words. They just threw the gravel down.
Right. But you can't.
But they didn't just throw gravel down because it's a brand-new concrete apron anchored up.
Right. They put a concrete apron.
Yeah, and the front shows the concrete, the, the driveway cut out to the street as also extending over.
Okay, well, that, that I didn't know. I don't.
All right, okay.
Was there a permit for the apron?
Oh, no, that's a wood fence.
We don't know.
No, there is.
It was.
Can I ask that you, you didn't do all this work? Was it a city project to put that in?
No, no, no. She hired a contractor.
To get a permit.
Did this concrete in all or?
No, it's not concrete.
Yeah, I understand. But it all flows together. It was all done at the same time?
No.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
No.
No.
Okay.
Cause it's that little tiny.
No, that's old site. This is old site.
Oh, okay. Okay, it doesn't look that.
That's not how he's drawn, but yeah.
He did really, after the apron, what he did was he threw gravel down.
Okay, so.
So do we just move the iron gate into my property?
You're gonna, you can't, unless you have permission, either by form of an easement, the very least an easement, from your next-door neighbor, you can't use their property unless you have permission. And that's an easement. That requires a legal document, consent to the property owner, and then you've got an easement that gets recorded. Because if you sell this property in the future, okay, and I was an attorney representing the buyer and I saw this encroachment, unless you're gonna produce to me some form of easement, uh, I'm not gonna let my client buy your property.
Is it easy enough just to remove that iron gate and put it on my property?
Easy enough to move, is it easy enough to move the driveway over to her property line?
It's, it's literally just the, the gate that was there when I purchased it. I can just move it?
I think you're misunderstanding what we're saying.
It's not the fence.
If I could, right.
Please.
It's the driveway.
So there's two parts. There's the fence and the driveway. There's actually three parts. And then there's the concrete apron.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is, is that your fence? Did you have that put in?
No.
It was there when you bought the property?
Correct.
Um, that's a problem because that fence, which, which you are probably assuming is yours, is not.
It's probably not.
It's not your fence.
It's not your fence.
It's not your fence.
It's not on our property.
So, let me speak.
Yep.
The property last year, before the driveway went in, had metal fence across the front, right at the sidewalk, that matches the metal fence that extended along that westerly property line until some point where it changes to wood. So the metal fence on the property line on the, is it north or east? It's east. No, it's west.
West.
It's west. The west part got pulled out so that the driveway could go in. And the sections of fence are propped up over there.
So you're saying.
The metal fence belongs to eleven eighteen Summerfield. Because like I said, it goes not just on the side property line, across the front as well.
It matches.
It matches.
So you're saying it is her fence?
That's the property's fence. It clearly predates the seven or eight years ago that, when she bought it.
Right.
I can't speak to whose ownership of the wood fence, which also kind of goes beyond the property line. Um, but I don't know, um, who put that in. I, the aerials are not clear enough to, you know, go back. I didn't, I wasn't sure how far I had to go back, but, you know, in the last five to 10 years, it's not clear enough to know who did what with that fence. But in the last year, the metal fence was in the front of the property and running along the side, and it was altered in order to accommodate the driveway. But it, that fencing belonged to eleven eighteen Summerfield.
Just across the front. Did it go down the side as well?
Yeah, it went down the side.
And now the extra piece is just laying against.
But how do we know it belonged to eleven eighteen?
It's really.
The front of eleven eighteen.
The fence issue is relevant to the case.
It's part of her, um.
I understand, Jack. But we, we cannot, since it's been brought up in the application as an issue.
No, but it's not, it's not an issue. The, the real issue is the encroachment of the driveway.
Well, I, yes, I understand.
And that's, that's where I believe the focus should, to get, to try and get this thing into conformity so that we're not, we don't want to in any way, shape or form be perceived as giving permission to anyone to use someone else's property without their consent.
And I think the fence relates to, um, ensuring that by, if it's replaced on the property line, then whatever section or driveway she has to pull out from the encroachment, she can't, it can't be re-encroached.
Okay. That could be something.
So, and, and in addition to that, if you put the fence on her property, the driveway is useless because it's not wide enough to allow.
I was just gonna ask, yeah.
Or it was open.
It's able to be used as a driveway. It can't be used as a parking space in our ordinance.
So you could access the backyard?
So they could drive to the back and then park. But obviously, yes, physically you wouldn't be able to open doors on a normal car.
And if they did that, they'd have to extend their driveway, which means their purchase coverage would also increase and we don't have any plans.
So Donna, what's the, what's the descriptive definition of the parking space?
Nine by eighteen.
Then you have to be able to open.
No, no, parking space only needs to be nine by eighteen, but they've only got, you know, seven and change.
There's no way for her to get in and out of a car.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're two feet short.
But for a single or two-family house, we don't regulate the width of the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
So the physical impossibility of not being able to use it as a parking space is one thing, but it could still be a driveway to the back, just like so many houses.
Right.
You know, from the twenties, they have these little narrow, seventy-foot wide, but they go to the backyard where the garage is, and that's where everybody parks.
So you do gravel.
And there's clearly sufficient area in the backyard for two parking spaces.
Right, right.
So to, for her to address this, either she has to get an easement from her neighbor.
Not if she removes.
Or, or remove.
Can it be?
Yeah. Or remove the gravel.
And the fence, that's hers.
But we wouldn't decide whether that fence is hers or not, but.
So practically, you have to say that it is hers. Cause it goes around her whole property.
Okay.
The iron one?
No, the wood one.
But it could be the people on the side that put it there?
It's, it's, it was all, it's the same white wooden fence all the way around and it goes on lot one. It goes over lot sixteen.
And in twenty seventeen.
The signs match their fence.
The wooden fence went out from the side of the house to the west, followed the property line south, and then made the weird corner.
Yeah.
That it does now. I had to go back to twenty seventeen. I, I'm sorry, it just kept refreshing.
I mean, the section eight tenant didn't put that off.
Yeah, 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 but.
And it doesn't look that old.
Yeah.
That's regardless of the situation. You still have to address the situation, Ms. Sager.
But am I allowed to take someone else's fence down?
It's your fence.
It's, they're saying it's your fence.
I never.
It's before you.
Maybe constructed before you brought the property.
Yeah, if you only bought the, the house seven years ago, that was only, yeah, this was early.
But the fence doesn't look that old, that's what I'm saying.
Twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen.
Have you ever spoken to your neighbor?
So there's nothing on, nothing on that lot. They put no parking signs up on that.
The question is, have you ever spoken to the property?
No. No, and they always use that fence like it's theirs. They always put signs up on it and they always, that's why I have.
Who put signs up on it?
That, I guess, the owner of the property. They always put no parking signs up on it and so, right, I've.
And it is partly on their property, so.
So I'm afraid to take it down because I think they put it off.
You're gonna have to talk to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna have to communicate with them.
Cause the wooden fence even cuts it.
You should have the name of the.
It cuts into the property.
You noticed the neighbor, correct?
No, there's no house.
All property owners.
You, you had to notice the owner.
Oh, yes, my architects, I think.
So you have the name of the owner, so you have to contact that owner.
So, we're gonna go from here to the end?
Well. No, that's not a condition of approval, because if the owner does, that's a major thing, you have to, you have to fix this.
Yeah.
This would have to be fixed, because if we approve, I would, I would have to do all kinds of gyrations to try and protect us from a lawsuit. From a contiguous neighbor that says, well, you approved this, and you knew they were parking on my property. Uh, that's a condemnation, that's a taking of my property, I'm gonna sue both her and the city. And I'm not gonna get the city involved in a lawsuit, and I don't wanna see your client get involved in a lawsuit either.
Do you understand, Ms. Sager, you have to resolve this before we can do anything?
I do now.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's something, if you're, if you're gonna tell them you're gonna move it back to your property line, I don't think they'd complain about that.
They'd get more land?
They'd get more land. You just gotta tell them that, and just say, look, we got the issue with the fence. If it's my fence, I'll move it over. If it's not, then I'm gonna probably wind up, I'm gonna have to put, we're gonna have to put something in there. That ensures unless they give you an easement, they say, it's okay, we'll give you an easement. If you get an easement, then you got an easement for, you gotta get an engineer to plot the easement for the distance and the dimensions.
For the apron for the driveway?
For the, for, well, the driveway, it's probably, that's city property, but anything that belongs, anything you're using that belongs to the contiguous property owner. You would have to have that as the subject matter of an easement. Okay, easement would have to be perpetual, would have to be for driveway purposes and also for maintenance, to go in and do maintenance work on their driveway. And it would have to be prepared, I assume it's gonna be prepared by an attorney, or it's gonna look horrible.
You're probably going to need an attorney for this.
For that, you're gonna need an attorney for that, and it's gonna have to be in recordable form, because it's gotta be recorded. So that someone in the future who does a title search will see for either property that there is an easement for this property on this property next door.
I think I'm just. The original survey when you bought the property, didn't show a fence?
You don't know.
Yeah.
You don't remember. When you closed on the property, did you get a survey?
No.
No.
When you put the driveway in, did you get a permit from the city?
Um, my contractor got a permit.
You have that permit?
I.
Did you, did you buy this house cash or with a mortgage?
Um, this was cash.
Alright, so then you didn't get a survey.
That's why they didn't get a survey.
So I didn't get a survey, and.
Alright.
So I need a survey.
No, you just purchased it.
I mean, okay.
We were asking that earlier, what might it have shown about the fence?
Yeah, we're just trying to figure out how it got to where it is, whether you were aware of it, and if not, okay, you're not.
Problem, you can't just move your fence, because then you're not gonna prove the driveway.
Well, we can't.
Either you get the approval and the easement, and everything is filed correctly. From your neighbor, who you haven't noticed of his name and address. Or you move everything yourself, have everything moved. The driveway has to move, be skinny, it has to decrease the width of your driveway.
Right.
By two to three feet.
And that's what I guess I wanted to ask.
And then you have to move the fence. If the fence is not, it belongs to you, but based on what they're saying, it sounds like it's your fence. And you need an engineer to provide all the correct dimensions.
I just want to move everything back to where my property is. I don't need to use the driveway, I don't.
I was just gonna say, if you don't need to use it as a driveway.
No, I don't need to use it. I did it because I thought it would be.
What if she aborts the whole, like, I'm not gonna park there, I'm just gonna. Use it as side yard, even though the apron, we require the apron to go away at that point?
Oh.
Sure.
Yeah, you could do that, you could just say, I don't wanna use it as a driveway, turn it into a side yard. And now we're not dealing with cars going on there, and now it's no longer an issue, but you'd have to remove the apron.
And the gravel.
And you're gonna have four to five potential cars for children and your mother for street parking.
And no parking around town. I mean, before you, I understand that you really wanna get moving on this, and you are concerned about time. But. You have a choice, right, to do something like that, say, okay, I just wanna get this over with, or it takes a little bit of time that it's gonna take to. Figure the driveway out, that you do have a place to park, and in addition, while you're doing that, again, it's not our business, but maybe it gives you the opportunity to think about what you wanna do. About the heating and cooling in your house. If you have to come back, you're gonna have to come back anyway.
Well, we can't steer it.
Are you, you're gonna. I don't think that if we were putting them back, we would deal on purpose, probably.
While you're doing that, Russell. There is off-street parking required for property. In the, for an R1 zone, correct, Donovan?
There's one, I'm sorry, Jack.
There is.
Okay.
Yeah, single-family houses.
So if you take out the driveway, and we eradicate the parking, onsite parking, that's another, that would be a variance.
A design exception.
Or a design exception.
Even, even though the back of the property, it's seven feet, nine inches to the property line, you would still require them to use that as a driveway to the backyard?
Well, she could put a curb cut. I mean, yeah, she could, she could have done a curb cut across, but you could put that way. And then have a driveway there. Cover this one off, make the new one.
I think you have a lot to think about, Ms. Sager.
Yeah.
I, I don't think the best approach would be to. Make these decisions so quickly.
Oh, it's been a long time coming.
No, I know, but.
Just because I don't understand all.
These are things that you haven't thought of, and you weren't aware of as well.
Yeah, I definitely do not understand a lot of. What is required or the procedures, I'm tired financially, I'm just tired.
I'm sorry, it's been such a long process for you, but this is brand new to us.
Do, beyond what we can do, so I understand all that, but it's so easy, it's, I just hear you guys saying, like, well, you just put it in the back, but it's ten thousand, ten thousand, in my head, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, and I'm, I'm done. I think, I don't know, I need to think about what to do with this property and my mother, and it's not your fault or your business, but I'm, I'm beat, I'm beat down. But I thank you.
Okay, so. I don't wanna. Kinda wanna give her some light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah.
We really haven't discussed the nature of her application, which is side yard variance relief. Before we send her away saying, oh, you gotta, I mean, she's gotta fix the driveway problem, she's gonna have a civil lawsuit on her hands. But. Does the board wanna have a conversation about the side yard setback issues related to the addition? If she wanted to pursue the addition. Is there any, we should probably have a cross-examination of the witness on at least the architectural issues, and at least wrap up that part of.
Yeah, we can't, plain and simply, we can't take a straw vote on the variances, but we can give some indication. I wouldn't wanna send an applicant off to do this work if project's going to be definitely turned down. Let's face, why do that to?
It, it, that's a valid point, Jack, but.
But we can't take a straw vote, but you can sort of give some indication.
How do you get a permit for something, and someone does it, and I just don't understand the process, I guess, I think I'm doing everything right, I'm trying to get a, you know, my architects, I think I'm getting a professional to put, you know, the driveway in, come to the city, get the permits. But nothing is actually done correctly.
I, I can only say, it comes down to the people you're dealing with, Ms. Sager, if, if they had gotten.
She could get a permit.
The survey, no, no, let me finish. The survey would have shown exactly where your property line begins and ends. If they used the survey with the construction office at the time of the permit, they would have said, this is as far as she can put her driveway. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it comes down to the people you're working with.
Thought I hired someone who was a professional, I guess. Yeah. Alright.
No, okay, alright, okay, let's, uh, we have basically two witnesses, anybody wanna cross-examine the witnesses from the public?
I'll open it up to the public for Mr. Nolan's testimony at this point, does anybody want to cross-examine Mr. Nolan with any questions?
Unless you have more testimony than I do.
Alright, seeing none.
There's no other way to get around the issue that we have with the driveway.
Yeah, initially, you mentioned you have comments in response to our engineers.
Uh, it was regarding the window, and I, what I thought was the fence issue was that they were, that these pieces of fence that were removed were gonna be cleaned up.
Okay.
I didn't realize that there was, uh, an issue with the, uh, the fence being removed.
Okay, alright, that's fine. Okay, alright. No one has any questions for the witnesses?
No, no one in the public.
Okay. Okay.
So, how do you wanna proceed, Ms. Sager? We're kind of at a standstill here.
Yeah. I, I don't know what the right answer is, I guess I call my neighbor and try to look for the easement first.
So you're gonna need some time to contact, contact your neighbor. We can offer you the next date, which is October 22nd, but I think that's kinda quick.
Yeah.
So the next date would be not until November 12th, is that correct? Marie?
That is correct, as, I don't know why I'm.
I haven't got that one yet.
What's that?
There's, seems to be like a little.
I know, I think it's like a placeholder, but.
A placeholder, but I don't know what that is. Okay, um, so November 12th.
Are you good with November 12th?
And then the only other option would be December 10th.
We'll try November 12th.
Alright.
So you would like us, you'd like, you'd like to make a motion, carry this to November 12th, without further notice, so that you have an opportunity to figure out your options and figure out which one will work for you.
And feel free to call my office, and I will help give you some guidance, direction, procedure, and.
And do we need her, for her to agree to the extension of time?
I always ask that. Under the MLU, we have a certain amount of time, which I'm not sure if we're gonna be over or not, but the applicant can extend that time voluntarily. And if we're gonna carry the case, I'm gonna need you to consent to any extension of time necessary, given it's for us to act on.
And if I could, you should get an engineer to help you here, because if you elect to move your driveway, there's issues there that need to be looked at.
We have an engineer already involved that was comparing the, about the comments with the driveway and the top of the mirror, so we'll just have them, we'll help work on a layout that, you know.
Coordinate with us.
Yeah.
Alright. So I'll make a motion to carry 1118 Summerfield Avenue to November 12th, 2024, without further notice. I'll second.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
And Chairman Avaloni?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Sager.
Thank you.
So, just, sure, I'll make a motion to take a 10-minute recess. I'll second.
Alright, hold on, I have a question. Where did you work with Dan's daughter?
Oh, we did, we did some things together.
How long ago?
Um.
Like on the same.
No, no, not real work, just volunteers.
Oh, okay, alright, it's been five years, it's been five years? Okay, alright, okay. Okay.
No, it's obvious. And these are your friends.
Let's get back to it. Marie?
Ready to go?
Yep.
Okay.
No, yeah.
When you're in the room, take roll.
Hi. Um, I'll take roll call now, Wendy Glassman. Is present. Daniel Harris?
Yeah.
Russell Lewis is not present.
He's recused.
He's recused.
Recused. Um, Natalie Passerini?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Yeah.
Vice Chair John Scully is absent, and Chairman Avaloni.
Who is also recused from this.
John Scully is also recused here.
Yeah.
And here. Alright, so, 1201 Bridge Street, Mr. Rural and Mr. Gaylord.
Sorry. But I don't think that you're either of those.
I am not. Good evening.
Who are you?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Dante Alfieri on behalf of the applicants. Um, so I know the board is aware, we've, my, my clients have been here at two previous meetings, um, we are here for a third and final attempt. Um, I do have two individuals to provide testimony tonight, I do have an engineer, and I do have a planner, um, but just to recap the background as to what we're here for.
What was your name again?
Dante Alfieri. Okay, Alvery? Alf, Dante, Alfieri.
Alfieri.
Alfieri, yes. Oh, okay. If I'm not talking. Yes, he is.
I can hardly hear you.
Can you hear me now? No? Alright, so I'll try to talk as loud as I can, there we go, good? Can you hear me?
Back of houses too, here.
Alright, perfect, um, so we are here seeking the board's approval with regards to, um, the property is located at 1201 Bridge Street, it's block 2104, lot 18. It's an existing single-family home, it actually fronts on two streets, it's a corner lot, it fronts on Bridge Street and Fourth Avenue. Um, we are here seeking the board's approval with relation to improvements to the backyard, um, which is also technically the front yard. Um, there is an existing pool, there's an existing patio, and there's existing fence. Um, so, all of the improvements that we're here to discuss tonight are within that backyard slash front yard, I'm gonna call it side yard, but it's technically a front yard. Um, because it's a corner lot, um, they're all enclosed and encased within that existing fence. Um, there's one. Point with regards to the fence itself, which is existing, there's a small portion that extends into the front yard. Before you proceed anymore, Jack, just, just so it goes on record, we have jurisdiction, they did all their notices again? Okay.
Yeah, we have jurisdiction, and Mr. Alfieri is an attorney.
I am.
We didn't identify, so, but I know who. Okay, go ahead.
Um, so there is an existing fence, a portion of the fence extends into the front yard, I'm gonna have our engineer run through all of the proposed modifications to this backyard area, and touch on that fence, um, as well. Um, so without further ado, I'll have our engineer come up and describe the property. Thank you.
So, please raise your right hand. Sandra Swerafirm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name for the record, spell it for us.
Michael B. Intile, I-N-T-I-L-E.
Michael, could you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Yes, I'm a professional engineer, um, since 1990, I'm a principal with Crest Engineering Associates, we're located in Millstone and Tom's River. Um, I've prepared site plans, subdivisions, plot plans such as this for about 25 years, and provided testimony at boards such as this, mainly throughout Monmouth, Ocean Mills.
Your license is in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
We accept your credentials, thank you, please proceed.
Thank you.
Well, to like. Now, okay, we have one member of the board who was absent at a prior meeting, but she did give me a certification that she's reviewed the transcripts, and she's prepared to test, to hear the matter.
Understood.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, as Dante said, we're in the R1 residential zone, we're 4,950 square feet total for the property, we're located at the corner of Bridge Street and Fourth Avenue. Um, existing on the site is a three-story, single-family home structure, there's an inground pool, a patio, um, there's pool equipment located in the northeast corner. There's a pergola, and there's a five-foot diagonal fence that you mentioned encloses improvements. The property, uh, just in terms of the slope of the property, it drains from north to south, so that's away from, um, from Fourth Avenue towards, uh, the street, towards Fourth Avenue. Uh, on the north side property line, towards Fourth Avenue. And, and in terms of the improvements we're proposing. You mentioned the patio improvement, there's two sections of patio that we intend to improve on the property. One is about 13 feet by 33 feet, that's on the Fourth Avenue side. It's in the front, technically in the front setback, this is a corner lot, but it is a front setback, uh, so that patio needs a variance for the construction there. Uh, the other section is about three feet by 20 feet. It's on the very north side of the property, on the opposite side of the pool. So those are the two patio sections that we're proposing to add to the property. Uh, the other improvements are relocating an existing AC compressor unit, and if you have my plan, which. Is entitled plot plan.
Let's mark that, yeah, do we have any other plans from other?
I have, I brought.
If so, we'll make yours AA one.
Additional plot plans that the board may have.
These were submitted plans.
Yes, they've already been submitted.
From this chairman?
Yes.
So let's make it A1. No, I mean, do we have another engineering plan from the prior hearings? Already in the record? No problem, let's make this AA one, so we know the difference. AA one? Yes, please.
And just to be clear, the, the plan that we're handing out here is the plan that should be in your folder from.
From your office?
Right, yes, correct.
That's fine, let's make sure, does everyone have this, so they have a picture in front of them?
The Crest Engineering Plan?
Right. Yeah, 62424, last revised 10/1/24. So those are, those are the patio improvements, the second improvement I was mentioning was the pool equipment located in the northeast corner. And if you look at your plan, you can see an inset we created to show a little more detail of how that equipment lays out, so you could, you could see it more clearly at that scale. Um, and what's intended there is there's an existing compressor from the third-story addition, fairly new compressor. A noiseless type, high-efficiency unit, which is intended to be moved, uh, to the north. Uh, adjacent to the existing compressor, the, the rectangular box there. And that new compressor relocated will be in a variance condition at 2.4 feet from the side property line where five is required, so that's the second item. Uh, the third, uh, there is a fence mentioned that is just slightly north of the rear building line of the existing home. And that's because there's a roof leader that drains there, and, uh, and a bracket, so that if you were to try to.
Do you remember, Donna, what was it originally that they proposed? A foot?
Maybe. I didn't write that down.
And now they're at 2 feet or 2 and 1/2 feet?
2.2.
2.2.
Wow, yeah, like almost exactly a year, on November 8. Oh my gosh. Let's see.
I remember. I think it was right on the property line, maybe, at that one point?
It was very close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we're dealing with a little matter.
Yeah, I think I.
To that end, it is, it is a narrow area, so my client. I understand. They're certainly trying to address the board's concerns. And the neighbor there, it, there's no living space directly across. It is a driveway, so they are cognizant of their neighbors, and they're not trying to impact their neighbors in any way. Well, you know, it's really more for the neighbor to say that. Understandable. But I'm just wanting to put, I'm just trying to paint the picture, so.
They just went to the, at the first beat.
And I was going to get to that point, yes. But I was just making the point that it's not so much that the applicant is happy, it's really that the neighbor is happy, right? Understandable. Does anybody on the board have any questions in regards to the extension of the patio, the equipment being closer to the property line, the barbecue grill being right at the fence location? Is that correct? It's right at the fence? Correct. With an underground gas pipe?
Yes.
Is gas coming off the house?
Yes, excuse me?
Is the gas coming off the house?
Is it coming out?
The service is from, from the house service, yes. It's not in.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Yeah, from the house service, underground, and then to the, to the unit.
Jerry, is all the stormwater directions all addressed?
Yeah, most of it was probably addressed in your last application. There's just minor conditions here that they, again, they put the yard drain in the corner and the pipe out, the pop-up in there, and I think they've addressed our concerns.
So nothing will affect the neighbor to the west or to the north, right? Do I have my directions correct?
Yep.
I have no further questions. Does anybody else?
No.
Anyone from the public?
Anyone in the public have any questions for their engineer? I guess not. Closing that, you want to bring on to your next witness? So our next witness is our planner.
Okay. Sir, you solemnly swear affirm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Justin Aucieello. A-U-C-I-E-L-L-O.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Justin, if you could, please provide your qualifications for the board?
Absolutely. I'm a partner with a consulting group. I've been a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 2008. I've appeared in front of this board in the past. I've also appeared at about 250 municipalities in the state, in 20 counties. In the course of my planning practice, I've prepared master plans, redevelopment plans. I've worked.
We accept your credentials. Thank you.
Are you understanding what the, the state?
Yes, state, yes, I am.
Fine.
Thank you. So, so Mr. Antiel really gave a fine description of the application and the site, so I won't, you know, belabor all of his points about the site and description and all the engineering reasons, but what I will do, and what's required under the law, is go through the variances that are required, and also give the justifications or the proofs for those variances. And just for the purpose of the record, I will be referencing a letter from your planner, November 8, 2023, updated through September 30, 2024. The variances that are listed begin on page 3. Mr. Antiel did do a good job in going through, they relieved that is required, but just to tee up my testimony, I'll go through them as well. I need a variance for the patio, front yard setback, a variance for the patio side yard setback, a variance for the HVAC equipment side yard setback, and the fence. Just before I begin, the purpose of the planning justification or the proofs is really a balancing act in terms of the balance between the positives of an application versus the detriments. And the goal of a planner is to establish that, obviously is to prove and is to hopefully convince you as board members that positives of the application do outweigh the detriments. I think, just to begin, I think there's an improvement, in my opinion, a significant improvement of the form and function of the usage of this property from the current condition. Mr. Antiel gave the technical reasons for the variances and kind of the reason behind why these variances are required from an engineering standpoint, but I'll just put it in planning terms. I would say that this application under positive criteria advances multiple purposes of zoning under the MOUL. I believe that under criteria C, there is sufficient light air and open space, even though this is an undersized lot, and there are, there are conditions that are existing on this property. In fact, all of the improvements relate to existing conditions to make them better from the current condition. I would say that there is a sufficient lighter and open space, that's criteria C, and there's sufficient space on this property to accommodate the existing imposed improvements under criteria G. I think it's important in the context of that statement to show that, as proposed, the application is well under the impervious coverage maximum, which is max required is 65%, existing is 35.7%, proposed is 52.3%. So it is well below the impervious coverage requirement, and really, as a planner, that's one of the first things that I look at in terms of, especially when a patio is being proposed to be expanded. They're doing that, and the coverage is still, in my opinion, you know, well below the maximum. As you heard from Mr. Antiel, the reasons for the expansion of the patio is not just for the enjoyment of the property owners, but it's a safety reason as well. They need more, more space in the sidewalk interior to maneuver around the pool. So it's not just for the function of having more space to sunbathe and have friends over, but also to, you know, reduce somebody from falling into the pool. I think that is, I think that is a benefit. I think it's also a benefit that the applicant will be shifting the pool equipment, even though a variance is still required for that. I believe that it provides enhanced screening, bringing it, bringing it towards the house, even though it's approximately 2.2 feet shift. Obviously, it's not a lot, but I think the board is cognizant of the fact that there's not a lot of space in this backyard, this undersized lot. There's, there's frontage on two roadways. There's no way to expand this lot. The applicant is doing its best to work with, you know, what they have. Relative to, to the noise generation, it's really, as you heard from Mr. Antiel, this is, this is quiet equipment, the high efficiency. The fence, the reason why it's.
But essentially what they're going to do is take that equipment, as you're saying, and move that and compile it closer to the house to keep it from being spread out like that. And there's another reason for that. It's hard to see on the plan per se, but if you're walking into the backyard across where the pergola is, making a right across the back of the house towards that equipment, the equipment currently runs directly into your path of where you'd be walking, we're going north now, parallel to the back of the house. You run right into that equipment, and it's sort of a tripping hazard and not an ideal location right now. So, and in particular because they do have a patio to the left, so you want to make that quick left turn to get to the side of the pool area where they have chairs, but this equipment is sort of in the way. So the idea here is to take that second compressor, put it in a much more appropriate location next to the other one, bring that pool equipment and consolidate it tighter and expand the patio a little bit and make that 90-degree turn as it should be, and if it was planned at the same time, and it wasn't, there was piecemeal here. So, you know, that would be an improvement. So I consider that a significant improvement to what, it's a tripping hazard, it's unsightly, it's not in a good location. We mentioned the fence is just a minor issue, and the other variances are noted. We did receive your engineer's letter, if I may, dated September 23rd. And in that letter, and we tried to do this prior to this hearing so we could get as much in front of you as possible, in that December 23rd letter, under stormwater control page two, he has asked for the pre and post development runoff rates. So it's a small lot, as you mentioned, there's a lot back here. We want to make sure the neighbors aren't breached by any stormwater runoff. We want to meet all the codes of the township required. Calculations and so forth have been provided, and our office did provide a stormwater runoff calculation to the city and to your engineer's office dated October 1/24, showing what is typical, very diminist runoff from stormwater as a result of the improvements that we're proposing here. In addition to that, he asked for some additional grades, which we have provided on this plan, and under number eight, testimony on the downspout location, which I did mention, but it is in the north, excuse me, the southeast corner of the house in the back. That's why the fence is being moved forward slightly because of that downspout. And finally, asked for a general note indicating that existing curb and sidewalk on all frontages to be replaced if they're in poor condition, and we have added that note to the plan. Additionally, what we did to mitigate any concern or potential stormwater issues, I mentioned that the grade of the property runs from the north property line over to Fourth Avenue, and then it naturally drains right off the slope and into the sidewalk and curb area where you want that water to go. So we added a small stone area and drain, sort of like a Home Depot PVC drain and stone you would put around it to keep erosion at a minimal, and a six-inch pipe that would run down towards Fourth Avenue. It's on the plan, and with a pop-up. So essentially, that'll collect in that kind of tight area back there any water from the new patio, from the existing area, runoff into that little area depression, and then take it out of there so it doesn't collect there. With regard to stormwater for the larger patio we're adding to the south of the pool, that is going to drain actually at 2% off of the construction of the patio to that slope I mentioned that runs right to the curb line of Fourth Avenue. So there will be no issues with regard to that area, no issues when we mitigate with the pipe and the stone system in the back.
On that side, the runoff of the water, does it, that runoff over a sidewalk?
Yes.
Or just going under, and then it ices?
That's very normal. We don't have point flow. We have what was called just surface flow, like any of these lots. You would want it running off your grass. It does end up through the sidewalk, yes, off the coven and the street. That is, that's what you would intend. Now, if you had a point discharge, an intense discharge, you would not want to do that. But you don't have that here. So I don't perceive that as a problem, in my opinion. I don't think that's an issue. There's not a lot of contributing flow to it. So the mitigation is mainly, as I said, for the pipe in the back. And that's, that's pretty much what we're proposing.
To that point for the board's concerns...
Hold on. Let me get that, please raise your right hands. I didn't swear. Salam swear affirm the testimony about giving this matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I did.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jerry Fredham, board engineer.
Thank you.
Just so that the board knows, the way it was described by the applicant's engineer is correct. You know, if you look along the south property line there, where you have a yard drain and a pipe and a pop-up, that's a point discharge. So you want to be able to spread that water out a little bit, best they can. They did a pretty good job of keeping the water from going on their neighbor's property. The patio itself, from that point going, what would that be, east, it just sheets as it does now. The only difference is you're going to have some pavers there, which does absorb water when it's late at that kind of slope. But it will have some runoff going into the grass or go through the grass, and maybe not even, on a certain rate, it won't even make it to the sidewalk. It'll just sheet down towards the sidewalk. And it is acceptable practice that we carry on. I just wanted to further amplify his points.
Does the board have any questions for our engineer?
So my understanding is that the setback to the property line for the, all that equipment is actually somewhat less, or somewhat more now? We have a little bit greater distance between the property line and the equipment now? Is that correct, Donna?
Well, no, but I think it's more than what was previously...
That's what I meant.
Okay, yes.
That's exactly what I meant. From previous, a year ago.
Yeah.
It's hard to remember all the conversations we had on this earth because it's been a year.
I understand.
So what I was trying to get at, which Donna realized, was that it's a little better, right?
It's a little better.
A little bit.
It's a little better.
I guess it's a little give and take, to your point. We are consolidating that equipment. It's in not a good place at this time. If you were to walk back there, you would see that consolidating, it is the right thing to do, and adding that sidewalk patio section to get over to that side makes sense. But unfortunately, there's a variance as a result of it, yes.
What did we end up gaining? Do you remember, Donna, what was it originally that they proposed? A foot?
I didn't write that down.
And now they're at two feet or two and a half feet?
2.2.
2.2.
Wow, yeah, like almost exactly a year, November 8th. Oh my gosh.
I remember, I think it was right on the property line maybe at that one point?
It was very close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we're dealing with a little bit.
To that end, it is a narrow area, so my client...
I understand.
They're certainly trying to address the board's concerns. And the neighbor there, there's no living space directly across. It is a driveway, so they are cognizant of their neighbors, and they're not trying to impact their neighbors in any way.
Well, it's really more for the neighbor to say that.
Understandable. But I'm just wanting to put, I'm just trying to paint the picture, so...
They just went to the first feet.
And I was going to get to that point, yes. But I was just making the point that it's not so much that the applicant is happy, it's really that the neighbor is happy, right? Does anybody on the board have any questions in regards to the extension of the patio, the equipment being closer to the property line, the barbecue grill being right at the fence location, is that correct? It's right at the fence?
Correct.
With an underground gas pipe?
Yes.
Is gas coming off the house?
Yes, excuse me?
Is the gas coming off the house?
Is it coming out?
The service is from the house service, yes. It's not a new...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Yeah, from the house service, underground, and then to the unit.
Jerry, is all the stormwater directions all addressed?
Yeah, most of it was probably addressed in your last application. There's just minor conditions here that they, again, they put the yard drain in the corner and the pipe out, the pop-up in there, and I think they've addressed our concerns.
So nothing will affect the neighbor to the west or to the north, right? Do I have my directions correct?
Yep.
Okay.
I have no further questions. Does anybody else?
No.
Anyone from the public?
Anyone in the public have any questions for their engineer? I guess not. Closing that, anyone to bring on to your next witness?
So our next witness is our planner.
Okay. Sir, salam swear affirm testimony about giving this matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and...
Justin Aucieello.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Justin, if you could, please provide your qualifications for the board.
Absolutely. So I'm a partner with a consulting group. I've been a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 2008. I've appeared in front of this board in the past. I've also appeared at about 250 municipalities in the state, in 20 counties. In the course of my planning practice, I've prepared master plans, redevelopment plans, I've worked...
Please accept your credentials. Thank you.
Are you standing with the state?
Yes, I am.
Fine.
Thank you. So Mr. Antiel really gave a fine description of the application and the site, so I won't, you know, belabor all of his points about the site and description and all the engineering reasons, but what I will do and what's required under the law is go through the variances that are required and also give the justifications or the proofs for those variances. And just for the purpose of the record, I will be referencing a letter from your planner, November 8th, 2023, updated through September 30th, 2024. The variances that are listed begin on page three. Mr. Antiel did do a good job in going through the relief that is required, but just to tee up my testimony, I'll go through them as well. I need a variance for the patio front yard setback, a variance for the patio side yard setback, a variance for the atrac equipment side yard setback, and the fence. Just before I begin, the purpose of the planning justification or the proofs is really a balancing act in terms of the balance between the positives of an application versus the detriments. And the goal of a planner is to establish that, obviously is to prove and is to hopefully convince you as board members that the positives of the application do outweigh the detriments. I think, just to begin, I think there's an improvement, in my opinion, a significant improvement, of the form and function of the usage of this property from the current condition. Mr. Antiel gave the technical reasons for the variances and kind of the reason behind why these variances are required from an engineering standpoint, but I'll just put it in planning terms. I would say that this application under positive criteria advances multiple purposes of zoning under the MOUL. I believe that under criteria C, there is sufficient light air and open space, even though this is an undersized lot and there are, there are conditions that are existing on this property. In fact, all of the improvements relate to existing conditions to make them better from the current condition. I would say that there is a sufficient lighter and open space, that's criteria C, and there's sufficient space on this property to accommodate the existing proposed improvements under criteria G. I think it's important in the context of that statement to show that, as proposed, the application is well under the impervious coverage maximum, which is max required is 65%, existing is 35.7%, proposed is 52.3%. So it is well below the impervious coverage requirement, and really, as a planner, that's one of the first things that I look at in terms of, especially when a patio is being proposed to be expanded. They're doing that, and the coverage is still, in my opinion, you know, well below the maximum. As you heard from Mr. Antiel, the reasons for the expansion of the patio is not just for the enjoyment of the property owners, but it's a safety reason as well. They need more space in the sidewalk interior to maneuver around the pool. So it's not just for the function of having more space to sunbathe and have friends over, but also to, you know, reduce somebody from falling into the pool. I think that is, I think that is a benefit. I think it's also a benefit that the applicant will be shifting the pool equipment, even though a variance is still required for that. I believe that it provides enhanced screening, bringing it, bringing it towards the house. Even though it's approximately 2.2 feet shift, obviously it's not a lot, but I think the board is cognizant of the fact that there's not a lot of space in this backyard, this undersized lot. There's frontage on two roadways, there's no way to expand this lot. The applicant is doing its best to work with, you know, what they have. Relative to the noise generation, it's really, as you heard from Mr. Antiel, this is quiet equipment, the high efficiency. The fence, the reason why it's not aligned with the back of the house is due to the downspouts. So all in all, I think under the positive criteria, the applicant is taking a current condition and making it better and doing the best that they possibly can under the current conditions. For the negative criteria, it's my professional opinion that the grant of these variances will not present a substantial detriment to the public. Good. Now, the law says that any detriment must be substantial, because too reasonable people can disagree whether or not, or, you know, something has any detriment. But I think the evidence is clear that what's proposed today is an improvement over the existing condition, and the applicant is doing what it can to ensure that the detriments are as minimal as possible. Obviously, there's a detriment technically because variance relief is required, so arguably there's a detriment, but certainly it does not rise to the level of being substantial. And again, planning in its essence is a balancing act versus the positive and the negative criteria. I would also say that the application as presented does advance multiple purposes of the 2017 master plan report. Some of the purposes talk to the enhancement of the quality and enjoyment of the city's neighborhoods and the promotion of quality of life. You know, these are residents of the community who have improved their property over the years, and they will be further doing that as well. Another purpose is to promote a healthy and active community, and one of them is spending time outdoors. I think the applicant with this improved backyard or front yard area, technically speaking, you know, will be able to have better time outdoors. And generally speaking, to enhance the natural environment and the character of the neighborhoods. I think this enhances the neighborhoods as well. Just lastly, I think it's important, and Dante, Dante said this earlier, the improvements to the patio where it's being proposed is adjacent to a driveway of the adjacent property owner, and then, of course, there's a roadway on the other side. So it's not like what's being proposed is going to be butting up against someone's bedroom window. And also, I think importantly as well, there's fencing there, which helps to attenuate sound, and it also provides a visual screen. So I think for all those purposes, no substantial detriment. And then lastly, I don't see any impairment to your zone plan and zoning ordinance. The applicant, again, is trying to improve this property. I think what's proposed aligns well with your zoning ordinance, purposes of zoning, and your master plan. And for all those reasons, I would request that the board can feel comfortable in granting this relief. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions for their planner? All right, seeing none, board professionals. Anybody in the audience for their planner? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, chairman. We do not have any further testimony to provide. If you would like a closing argument or closing statement? So you've heard two of our professionals provide testimony with relation to the...
Actually, you know what? Let's open it up for general comment first before you proceed.
Yeah, sure.
Anyone in the public who would like to make a comment either for or against this Please come up, go to the mic, state your name and address, and be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Salam swear affirm the testimony about giving this matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Nancy Cotter, C-O-T, Nancy Cotter, C-O-T-T-E-R, 1203 Bridge Street in Asbury Park.
Great, thank you.
So you're literally the next-door neighbor?
Literally the next-door neighbor.
Please proceed.
So I would just like to say that the existing pool equipment, I'm in the yard all the time, in the driveway, I literally have never heard it. It just, it's really not a bother, and I think two feet more is not going to make any difference. So literally, I've never heard it.
So I guess based on what you're saying, you're in favor of this application?
Yeah, I can hear the pool splashing. I mean, the pool is louder, and it's very pleasant, but the pool makes more noise than the equipment does, really. It's quite quiet. So I have no complaints. I'm in full support of what my neighbors want to do, and I, you know, we plan to be on that property. In fact, you'll see us someday when we want to make some renovations. And, you know, so we plan to be there for a very long time, and so I just don't see it as a problem going forward for us.
Thank you, Ms. Cal.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public for general comment regarding this application? Seeing none, we'll close. Public comment, and you can do your final statements. Thank you, chairman. So as I was stating, we had two individuals provide testimony tonight, our engineer and our planner, to justify the proposed improvements on the site. Again, the improvements themselves are encased within that existing fence, and unfortunately with this property in particular, we are subject to two front yards because of being a corner lot. Some of these improvements, if this was an existing lot with permitted side yards that doesn't have two front yards, we most likely would not be here tonight. We do, luckily, we did have our neighbor come out tonight and provide some support for the application, so we would request that the board approve the application as submitted. Thank you. So now for our deliberation. Anybody on the board have any comments in regards to the application either for or against?
Okay, I'll make a comment. I appreciate the efforts made by the applicant to try to address some of our concerns. I know it's been a year since we had this application reappear before us. That's a long time. I would have to say I'm glad they got an engineer to look at the overall design and move that equipment appropriately, try to give a little more space to the edge of the property line. As for the fence situation, we didn't have an issue with that to begin with. We understood where the drain pipe was. And as for the patio and the grill, I don't see that as being a major problem.
I'd like to second that. My main concern was the mechanicals and moving them closer to the applicant's property line or away from the other property line. Everything else, it's within the bounds because of the two front yard situations. So I'm in favor of this application because of the remedies that have been made.
Anybody else on the board for comment? All right, based on that, I'll make a motion to approve 12, is it 1201 Bridge Street?
Yeah.
Are you seconding?
Yeah, I said...
Okay, as a condition, putting compliance to any outstanding conditions in the reports, just to be safe, if there are, if any, that's all.
Agreed.
And that's, they worked that out, true. Okay, got it.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell, Russell Lewis is recused. Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
And Chairman Amalani?
Yes.
Thank you, chairman, members of the board. We appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.